Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the November 4th, 2020 regular meeting of the Warren County School Board. First item will be Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody please rise.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The next item will be to accept and modify the agenda as written.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing done, motion carries. Community participation. Uh, community participation is a time intended for the public to give input on relevant school issues and not intended to be a question and answer period, as this may be the first time the board has heard this information. Please do not expect individual responses or any comment by the board at this time, but be assured that any concerns will be reviewed. Please print your name on the sheet at the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Have anybody would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Recognitions. Dr. Bowles, your Business Honor Roll, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each year, the VSPA honors businesses that provide support to the school and through collaborative effort. And tonight, we have, we have three businesses that we would like to, to honor. Local businesses have the power to shape, shape community attitudes about public schools, and the VSPA Business Honor Roll is a way for local school divisions to recognize local businesses for their support. The Business Honor Roll helps our division say thank you for their vital contributions. The Warren County School Board wishes to recognize the following three 2020 VSPA Business Honor Roll recipients. The Front Royal Warren County Ministerial Association, the Reverend Christie McMillan Goodwin, President. Shane Goodwin, Principal of E. Wilson Morrison Elementary School, nominating the association and stated in his application that the Front Royal Warren County Ministerial Association has made a number of significant contributions to our school over the past eighteen months. The group held a book collection to enhance our classroom libraries, organized readers for school-wide read-aloud events, provided more than eighty coats, scarves, and gloves to our students for winter weather, worked on an outdoor landscaping project, painted interior walls, and provided food for our teachers to show appreciation for their hard work. Our school is a better place for children because of this organization's commitment to children and education in our community. And Ms. Goodwin is here.
Ms. Goodwin, we have this from VSPA to recognize you for all your hard work and your group. Thank you very much. I'm good.
To Ray Plastics, American Incorporated, Tracy Llewellyn, Human Resource Manager. Jenny Donovan of the Special Services Department stated in her application that in October of 2019, I received a call from Tracy Llewellyn offering to adopt students and families in Warren County schools. Tracy explained that employees of Toure wanted to give back to the community and wanted to ensure no children or families went without gifts for Christmas. The employees of Toure adopted over one hundred students and families for Christmas throughout the division. The impact this made, the impact this paid on our families was incredible. The families were overwhelmed by the generosity and completely grateful.
Well, teary eyes.
Thank you so very much.
It is truly a pleasure.
My pleasure in you taking care of the families in Warren County.
Oh, it's a pleasure. We're looking forward to giving a hand this year, too.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And our third business partner is Cargill Turkey Products Farm. Barbara Stunable, in his nomination letter, Michael Hirsch stated that the Cargill Turkey Products Farms donated one hundred and twenty-five turkeys to families in need for Thanksgiving. They help provide a meal to those that might not have been able to enjoy the holiday that this not been donated. And I do not believe we have a representative from Cargill Turkey here tonight that we want to thank them.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just mention that the, um, the Business Honor Roll was an initiative of our late board member, Roy K. Boyd.
Correct. Just as far as for the board, we would like to thank all the businesses, whether you've made the Honor Roll or not, for all you guys and ladies and gentlemen and businesses do for our community. Without your support, it would be a lot harder on our school system and our families. So, thank you very much. All right. Next item will be consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done, motion carries. Next item will be reports. Diversified Minds and Brighter Futures Principals Report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Chairman, Board, and Dr. Bowles. Thanks for having me tonight. The non-traditional educational opportunities throughout Warren County meet the needs of many of our learners. The program supports students in grades K through eight in Brighter Futures Program and grades nine through twelve in our Diversified Minds Program. Currently, there are fifty-three students in our program today. None of those students are virtual. While enrolled at Brighter Futures and Diversified Minds, students are supported by clinical staff, certified teachers, and community mentors to meet their diverse needs. Through small group learning and highly structured environment and community-based instruction, students learn the strategies necessary to return to their home school and be successful. Students can also earn a standard diploma while they're at Diversified Minds as well. During these uncertain times, some of the students and staff and I, we put together a video regarding the mitigation strategies with the help of Mr. Hirsch, and we hope you enjoy it. It was fun making it.
Good evening, Board. Mr. Chairman, Dr. Bowles, I want to introduce you to the Diversified.
And the students really enjoyed making that. The high school students were helping the little elementary kids. It was great to see. And they were seeing that as they were leaving to go get on the bus, too.
Great.
Any questions?
Bye, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Next up, Blue Ridge Technical Center.
Before I start with my report, you know, the old saying, if you want something done, you ask a busy person to do it? Well, Ms. Llewellyn also sits on our CTE Advisory Board for the county as well. And I know you all approve that list every year, but sometimes you don't connect a face with a name, so she gets even more kudos for, for that piece as well. Well, Blue Ridge Technical Center has risen, I believe, to the challenges this year, as a whole, our CTE program across the county is enrolling about seven hundred students less this year than what we have had. That is due basically to the change in the schedule that we've had to do, the cut in the size of the classes in order to maintain the six feet distance to provide a safe area for our students to work. As far as Blue Ridge Technical Center, we're actually running at about forty percent capacity compared to what we've done in the past. This year, a lot of our classes have gone from the semester length to the entire year in order to give the students the amount of time that we feel they need in the actual shop areas, learning the skills. So, um, one of the things that career and technical classes always look at are the Twenty-First Century Workplace Writing and Skills. That's the creativity, the problem solving, the critical thinking, teamwork, workplace safety, and a whole slew of others that add up to about twenty-two different aspects of skills that have been deemed as needed in order to be successful in the workplace. I brought with me tonight one of our Project Lead the Way Engineering teachers. This is Mr. Rusty Sears, and he has one of his students, Ms. Brittany Arp, and they are going to share a little presentation. What we have done this year is, when we have the students, we have truly beefed up the time that we have with them with hands-on types of activities that will engage them more. What we see is students, because they are at home doing a lot of their learning, when they come to us, they're ready for action. So, we do the front-end load of, this is the material you need to have, and then when they come into the classroom, we give them the opportunity to use that knowledge in some type of activity, our hands-on learning.
And Brittany was supposed to have somebody here joining her, but she's gonna have to be off. She kicked it out.
So, during our time designing the zip line, we were going over the engineering process, so we had to define the problem, generate concepts, develop the solution, instruct and test, evaluate solution, and then, and then present the solution. So, our problem was that we wanted to have fun while also practically applying the engineering design process. We needed to ensure that the zip line would be safe enough so we can have fun without injuring ourselves and to ensure, and we had to have the materials necessary, and we had to make sure everything's safe. So, um, for generating concepts, we knew that we wanted to have a slope of about four point five percent, and we wanted to have a sitting screen, and, and we also considered a braking block, using chains around trees to keep the zip line stable, have sagged the slits down, and having a hanging holder zip line and using gloves to slow it down, but we ended up rejecting last ideas due to safety. So, we used a decision matrix and looked to determine the best place to build the zip line. So, on our left, we have our criteria, and on our top section, we have the locations, and we rated it on a scale of one to four. So, our criteria was to have fun, be safe, and our constraints were three to six slope with braking system of a hundred-foot cable. Build the prototype, sorry. And I just, the prototype, we tested for the necessary height, slope, and select, when it did not work, and they didn't adjust it as needed. After a few times, we marked off measured areas once in our criteria.
And how many times did we go through? How many failures?
I think three.
Two design failures and one mechanical failure.
Sure.
And there's, oops.
And currently, I'm presenting the solutions, so that's the design process.
Yeah, and I don't think the video's gonna play, but if it played, you would watch Brittany sled down that zip line. And our takeaways from this is really, uh, my major concern is really teach the students the failures bit. I mean, they really have a problem failing, and anybody who's been successful knows that failure's an important part of being successful. And then, uh, the Twenty-First Century Four Cs for education, really, if you look at that picture, this is between failures. And again, it's, I think, was after our second failure and going into our third failure. Uh, you, you see the students there, they're collaborating, they're using the information they learned already. You don't see a teacher there. I didn't help them at all. I stood back and had them figured out. And that, that's what we really were looking for in those Four Cs. That picture demonstrates what those Four Cs are, so I was really proud of them. They never gave up. They wanted to write the zip line, and it's kind of fun to do. But again, they failed, uh, too low, not enough slope, something broke, but they finally got through it, and I think it was a great fortune. And we hear about the Four Cs, and that's really what it looks like. Any questions?
Anybody have any?
I just want to say you learn the best through failure. If you, if you don't fail, you don't learn to think it through and come up with a solution, so that's great.
You agree with her?
Yeah.
I also, I also think that, um, not giving up is a real character issue there. It's, it's easy to, to quit something, it's hard to hang in there, so congratulations on that.
Yeah. resilience is an important thing to teach. So, Brittany, do you want to go into engineering?
Yes, I do. Mechanical engineering.
We're talking right at that, and then she takes it. We can hear that.
We hire mechanical engineers.
Work-study program, it sounds like to me. Thank you all very much.
Next will be Dr. Bowles, your superintendent report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna start off with a big announcement for, for Warren County Public Schools and specifically Skyline High School. The college, the college board awards students annually across the nation for their success on the PSAT and the NMSQT. Both stand for the Preliminary SAT and the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Gabriel Smith, a senior at Skyline High School, was honored this year with not just one, but two national awards. Gabriel was awarded the 2021 African-American Scholar Award for Excellence in Academic Achievement and the 2021 Royal and Small Town Scholar Award for Excellence in Academic Achievement. Gabriel received both awards at Skyline High School on October 23rd. This is an outstanding accomplishment for, for Gabe and for Skyline High School. And in, in visiting with Mrs. Shepherd today, she said that this may be one of the first times that we've actually had a student receive such awards. So, um, our update on our coronavirus relief funds. So, we are, we are moving quickly through that. We have purchased virtual textbooks. Some of those have been arriving. Some of the hard copies also that go along with them have been arriving, uh, and, and we're getting those out to schools and, and to teachers as quickly as we can. Updated, so, so Tim brought in the ten gigabyte into the, into the, he, we're wired for it, but right now, we're only at three gig because we have to have the firewall, which is to be approved tonight, so that will get us up to the ten. So, right now, we're, we're running better than we were, uh, a couple of weeks ago. So, we are running a little quicker, so, so we're moving quick through that. Uh, the temperature scanners and cameras have been ordered, so we have our sample scanners. Uh, one is out by the front door as you enter. That is one that can be used as a standalone at an entrance, but that one is also designed to be put on the buses. Uh, then we have the, the scanner over here with the monitor, and, uh, so we're going to, to actually put that out at a school tomorrow, just to kind of test that out in that environment. We've had it at the, at the central office the last couple of days, just, just looking at it and reviewing it, and so we will be quickly making purchases to make sure that we can get those in by the deadline so that we can, can help with allowing a lot of people to come in at one time and, and scan temperatures instead of using the handheld thermometers. And since temperatures are getting a little colder, standing outside checking temperatures will not be any fun. So, the tablets have been provisioned and ready for distribut, and have been distributed to the schools. I know some schools have already distributed their tablets to some students, so next week, we will have our pre-K K reboot, so they will go through that to, uh, get the students in on the tablets, to work through Schoology, uh, reach out to parents. So, next week is the pre-K K reboot with the tablets. Uh, Tim gave us some great news today, that he's hoping that, uh, the Chromebooks will arrive on Friday. So, he said that, uh, they get in on Friday, he'll have them out next week, so we will do an elementary one through five reboot the following week, which is November 16th through the 20th, and, uh, get everybody up to speed on, on the device and on Schoology at the elementary level. Uh, VHSL released mitigation guidelines for, for return to participation. Uh, schools will be working through the guidelines in order to develop a plan for our schools. So, we actually had our first meeting today with athletic directors discussing a little bit about what we can do, what we cannot do. They are working with the other schools within our district to kind of come up with some uniform guidelines that maybe they can all adhere to, uh, but it's gonna be different at each site. I can tell you that right now. So, we will work through our plans, and then we will hopefully be getting those out to parents as quickly as possible. Mr. Smith sent the termination letter to Local Choice on October 30th for our health insurance, and I know that, that he's, he is ready to, uh, have the request for proposal for other insurance providers to be posted by this Friday, November 6th. So, we will start moving through that process and see where it lands. I do want to clarify, there has, you know, there, there have been some questions about drug testing in the schools, and I just wanted to clarify that, you know, right now, Warren County Public Schools does not have a drug testing program. We do not have a policy in place, we do not have a program in place. You know, at, at the last meeting, we, we have requested for board members to serve on a committee to evaluate and to develop. Um, you know, if there's anything to come up from that committee, that would not be implemented until, till next year, after the board would, of course, have to approve and give time for public comment on such a policy. So, um, I just wanted to clarify some of that, that, that we do not have a drug testing program in place, that, that we are going to review one and that we, we can develop one for our school system. The last thing I want to do is, uh, each year, the VSPA recognizes board members for their dedication, time, and hard work through the VSPA School Board Academy, designed to improve boardmanship skills across all divisions. There are five levels of awards in the academy program with certificates and pins awarded at each level. The academy awards are presented annually to school board members who meet those specific requirements. So, tonight, we are going to, uh, recognize three board members. Uh, two board members are new, so they will be going through the academy and hopefully next year, be receiving their academy award. So, tonight, I would like to recognize Mrs. Bauer and Mr. Wells for earning the Certificate of Recognition, and Mr. Williams for earning the Certificate of Achievement.
Thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, school board reports. Uh, Mr. Renobi.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't really have anything to report.
Okay. Mr. Dow.
I'm reporting.
Dr. Pence?
So, I didn't think I would have anything to report, um, but I had a little bit of time and got out of work early before the meeting tonight, and I, um, met my husband over at Skyline High School where, um, Sedexo and the ladies were handing out meals for kids this evening, so I had a chance to, um, hang out with them for a little bit, and they said that, um, they had really streamlined it a little bit more this week. I think last Wednesday, they said the line was very, very long over there, so they had, um, worked out a new plan this evening. They had this huge stacked-up cart, um, ready to go with meals and milks to hand out, um, and they were just the most pleasant ladies, um, while they were handing out those meals this evening, and I promise I can tell everyone how awesome that they absolutely are and how appreciative everyone is for their work.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Pence. Mr. Wells?
Um, nothing really to report, except that with regard to that, it's every Wednesday, and any family that has children from zero to eighteen, please come by. And this is a program that kind of depends on how many people come and take part in it to keep it rolling, so please, if, if you know anybody or if you can help anybody out by going by and picking up for their family or something like that, if they're working, that kind of thing, please take advantage of it.
What are the hours?
It's on four to six at Skyline High School on Wednesday evening.
And Warren County Middle School.
Warren County Middle.
And it's?
Yes.
Every morning at, um, each of, each of the schools, it's from nine, nine to eleven on Wednesdays.
Wednesdays at each of the schools from nine to eleven.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wells. Really, nothing to report tonight, Dr. Bowles. Thanks for all the, the updates, because things get kind of confusing, we cover so much material. If anybody has a question, just reach out, and we can probably clear up whatever the question is, quick and easy, and not cause any pain to anyone. So, moving on, action agenda, adoption and purchase of K through five math textbooks. Ms. Ruda-Sill.
The current pandemic caused by COVID-19 has increased the division's need for virtual tools to best serve our students. Though Warren County Public Schools adopted a math textbook series two years ago during the regular adoption cycle, funds were not available to purchase the adopted textbook at that time. Due to the potential for additional funding through CARES and increased emphasis on virtual instruction and virtual resources, both administrators and teacher representatives came together to consider two textbooks previously reviewed during the division's adoption process two years ago. Based on teacher and administrator feedback, we are recommending that the division adopt the Go Math Series published by Houston Mifflin Hardcore for kindergarten through fifth grades. Contingent upon the availability of funds, we're requesting their approval to purchase the adopted math textbooks for kindergarten through fifth grades, and the quotes were attached there in the amount of two hundred thousand, eight hundred thirty-five dollars and eighteen cents. Any questions?
Do we have CARE funds to cover that? We have to use our CARE funds by when?
We have to use our CARE funds by when?
Uh, December, December thirtieth.
Okay.
That's, it was November thirtieth and then they pushed it back to where everything has to be purchased and received and paid by December thirtieth.
Okay, not just approved, it has to be.
Correct, yes, yes.
Upon approval tomorrow morning, this will be. And they have assured us that within ten days, we will have access to the materials. Yes.
Ten days?
Yes. Ten business days.
Pretty impressive. Questions, concerns? Motion?
I move that Warren County Public Schools adopt and contingent upon available funds, purchase the Go Math series published by Houston Mifflin Hardcore for kindergarten through fifth grade now.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Textbook adoption, Mr. Fox.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The current pandemic caused by COVID-19 has increased the division's need for virtual tools needed to best serve our students. Community members and Warren County educators considered textbooks that approved by the Virginia Department of Education for instruction in biology and chemistry. Based on feedback from the review process, we are recommending that the division adopt Virginia Miller and Levine Biology and Pearson Chemistry.
Questions for Mr. Fox?
This is online or actual textbooks?
These are online and that, in the next, uh, next thing we're going to talk about, there's, it's primarily online, but there's also going to be a class set attached.
And this again is covered by the CARES Act?
Yes, with.
With each online part, we're going to have books for the classroom also, correct?
We're going to purchase a classroom set.
Set, okay, okay, good.
But that doesn't allow every student to have a textbook to take home? Is that correct?
There will not be a textbook for every student then. But they will have digital, every student will have digital access.
Okay.
And of course, we have a one-to-one, so everyone has a, uh, everyone has a device. So everyone actually has a textbook.
Okay.
I assume that book will be downloaded to whatever device they're using so they can open it whether they have internet or, or not, correct?
Yes, those, yeah, they can download so, so much of the content, just like anything else.
Okay, all right. Fair enough, thank you all. Anything else? Have a motion?
I move that we adopt Virginia Miller and Levine Biology and Pearson Chemistry.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Hang tight, Mr. Fox, approval of textbook purchase.
The current pandemic caused by COVID-19 has increased the division's need for virtual tools to best serve our students. Due to the potential for additional funding through CARES and increased emphasis on virtual instruction and virtual resources, we would like to add a digital component for students taking AP Physics and Environmental Science for one year. Additionally, we would like to purchase a seven-year digital license for Virginia Miller and Levine Biology and a seven-year digital license for Pearson Chemistry. The biology and chemistry purchase also includes a class set of textbooks.
Questions for Mr. Fox?
So this seven-year license didn't go along with the previous um, biology and chemistry?
We did not have a license for the previous biology and chemistry.
Okay, because this one said biology and chemistry also, right? The Pearson Chemistry?
Yes, the, the Pearson Chemistry is, is going to be a seven-year license and the uh.
But that goes along with what we pre, we, we just?
Yeah. Yes, yes, yes.
We just adopted it, this is the money side of it.
Yes.
Now, that's seven-year license, is that cost of seventy-two thousand?
Seventy-two thousand, seven, seven seventy-five includes the one year for the AP Physics and Environmental Science and the seven-year license for the chemistry and the biology.
Okay. Thought it did, but I wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Fox? Have a motion?
I move that Warren County Public Schools contingent on available funds, purchase a one-year digital add-on for AP Physics and Environmental Science and that we purchase a seven-year digital license for biology and chemistry for seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-four cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fox. Technology purchase of firewalls, Mr. Grant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, Warren County increased, uh, recently increased our network bandwidth to, to ten gigabits per second. Uh, in order for Warren County to make full use of the increased bandwidth, we need to purchase um, few firewalls for our network. Currently, our current firewalls will only go to three gigabits. So we, we still need to go that extra seven. Um, so it's, it's like building a highway, you know? Sometimes you got that two-lane area where, where, you know, all the, all the traffic gets bottled next. So we're looking to expand the four lanes on all of that. Um, so the uh, the cost of the um, of the firewalls uh, includes a, uh, one firewall and then a spare in case something happens, we were able to, to convert it to the spare. And uh, the cost of that is seventy-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Uh, and the funding comes out of the CARES grant, uh, CRF funds, which is the third set of CARES, uh, funds. Um, and all these items and services are purchased under the VASCO state contract. You have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Grant? I'm sure we have a choice. I mean, if we don't do it, we'll always be at three.
We'll just be a three, yeah, correct.
So, and we need it.
Yes.
Our children need it.
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion?
I move to allow Warren County Public Schools to be allowed to purchase network firewalls in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. No opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Grant?
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Am I mistaken, does the county also use our system?
Um, no, they, uh, they use our, our fiber. Um, but our, our, uh, our broadband is, is our own, so. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Uh, additional appropriation request for CARES Act funding, Mr. Valentine.
Good evening. Excuse me. Since early on in the pandemic, we have talked about CARES funds um, and have talked again about them this evening. That stands for the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Securities Act. And as I say, we've been calling it the CARES funds. In order for us to receive and spend the million, the one million, nine hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars in unanticipated or unbudgeted revenue that we're receiving through these uh, funds, an additional appropriation must be received from the Warren County Board of Supervisors. The following is a breakdown of those funding sources. And we, we basically have been calling it as CARES one, CARES two, and CARES three. It's three different pots of money that's coming to us. The first that we received was what we've called ESER, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. That's seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. The second, which we call CARES two, or the GEAR funds, is the Governor's Emergency Education Relief. That's two hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars. And then what we've been calling CARES three is the Coronavirus Relief Fund, um, which we also go by CRF, not GRF as I have noted there. That's nine hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So when you total that all up, all three funds, it's the additional million, nine seventy-three sixty-four. So um, what we would ask tonight is that you go ahead and authorize a superintendent to request from the Board of Supervisors that our appropriation be increased by that amount so that we can not only receive, but spend that money, some of which you've approved just in your previous actions this evening. Uh, be glad to answer any questions you might have about, about these funds or, um, the request.
How do we stand in what we've already approved to use of the CARES fund and what we should, we have left that we need to use by December thirtieth? Are we going to be able to use it all and not have to give it back?
No, we will not have to, to give anything back. Right now, we have, uh, we were actually reviewing that today. And uh, with what we have budgeted and what we anticipate, uh, we're within three thousand of, but we know our costs are going to be a little more. So from, from the CARES three or the CRF, that, you know, that is the pot that we're worried about right now with the timeline. We will have all that spent in time.
Good.
And I think too, if, if you got into a jam, you could go back, pick up some expenses that we previously had planned in, coming out of CARES one or two, and apply them to CARES three because the CARES one and two have a longer window to, to spend them. So I don't, as Dr. Ballinger said, we shouldn't have to return a penny of that money by, on December thirtieth.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Valentine? Do you have a motion?
I move that the Warren County Board of Supervisors be requested to increase the school board's fiscal year 2020, 2021 operating fund budget by one million, nine hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Valentine. First reading of the 2021, 2022 school calendar, Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
It's amazing that we're at this time in the school year where we're considering the 2021, 2022 school year. Um, in front of you or attached to the board agenda item, there is a draft 2021, 2022 school calendar. This calendar was comprised from a calendar committee, which has at least one representative from each of our schools and our programs. Um, the assumption for next year is that school will be normal. So we are, we are hoping that that's going to be the case, the power of positive thinking. So just really, um, I'll go through the, the calendar and then we can um, um, talk a little bit about it as we go through. So the, um, this calendar is based on previous year's calendars. Uh, we would start this, um, our new teachers would arrive around July twenty-seventh. Our um, returning teachers would, our veteran teachers would come back on August the third. We would start school on August the tenth. Our first holiday would be September the sixth, which I believe is Labor Day. The end of the first advisory would be October the eighth, followed by professional day on October the eleventh. We would have a professional day on November the second, which is Election Day, um, with a holiday on November the eleventh. Um, if, this is one of the changes to our calendar from previous years. We have, um, the calendar committee recommended that we have the entire week off for um, Thanksgiving break. We have had a difficult time on that Monday and Tuesday being a two-day week, attracting our kids to come to school for both of those days. Monday was usually okay, but then Tuesday, we dropped off pretty significantly with, with attendance. So um, I made a mistake on this calendar. Um, those two, those two days, the um, November the twenty-second and the twenty-third should be holidays for teachers and students. Two hundred and fifty-day employees will be required to either work or, or take a vacation day for those two days. I will change that in subsequent calendars. So winter break would be December twenty-second through, uh, for students through January the fourth. For staff, it would be December the twenty-second through January the second. There will be a holiday on January the seventeenth. We would have two professional days on February the seventh and eighth. We had requests from our principals and our teachers, both, that wanted to have two professional days in a row. Um, whenever we have a professional day, there's always um, a fight for teachers' time for those days. So you know, the school board office wants some time, principals want some time, and the teachers want time in their classrooms. So we're hoping with this two-day um, professional development that it'll allow us to give time for everybody who needs time for, for that professional development. Holiday on February the twenty-first. The end of the third advisory would be March the fourteenth. Spring break would be March the twenty-first through the twenty-fifth. This mimics last year's school calendar, which we were not able to do because that is when we closed for COVID. So um, let's hope that that's not what happens this coming twenty-two school, you know, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, we would have a holiday on April the fifteenth and the eighteenth, a professional day on April the twenty-ninth. And what we've done with um, this professional day is if our teachers participate in professional development at Lord Fairfax during the summer, then they can use this day as a comp day. And we would like to continue that. Um, it has been very successful in the past and we would like to continue that for this year and future years. Holiday on May the thirtieth. And then June the ninth would be the last day of school with a professional day on June, uh, the tenth. That leaves a hundred and eighty-six days, so that would build in six weather makeup days. And I've got a note here that if, um, we are under, operating under normal circumstances next school year, there's not a provision where we can use our weather ma, uh, virtual day um, as a weather makeup day. However, if that comes to pass and there is a provision, we may ask to revisit the school calendar so we could back the end of the school year up because we know we can do virtual instruction on weather days. We just have to have, um, the go-ahead to be able to do that. Let me see, um, so in the calendar that is proposed, there are thirteen professional days. Let me see if there's any. And then six we, uh, built-in weather makeup days. If we do not need all six weather makeup days, uh, we will back the school year up. And our typical number of days that we miss is about seven point six each year for weather. So, so we haven't built in quite seven, but we do have, um, six built in. Be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Shepherd, you answered the question I had. I was hoping we could use the virtual, so we're going to have to build in those days.
Right, yeah, so we're hoping, um, the one thing that I think is stopping that is not all kids have access to the internet. However, you know, if we could download the documents on their Chromebooks like we're currently doing for those students, then that would work as well. So I think it'll work its way through. And I think there will be a provision, is it this year or is it next year? Or is it two years down the road? I'm just not sure, so.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Ms. Shepherd?
So, not, not that it makes much difference, but we, we no longer have to justify based on previous years when to start school or start school before Labor Day, is that right?
That's correct. So we, we are grandfathered in. We could start anytime, um, in August or even July because of when we started doing the pre-Labor Day start. So those school divisions that just started a couple of years ago, they do have to do some justifications, but we are not in that, in that group. I think it was 2011 was the year that they used. If you did a, if you did a, a pre-Labor Day start in the year of 2011, you were grandfathered in.
And then the only, the only other question is, I know the legislature has changed around some holidays. That was taken into account. I think you mentioned that Election Day wasn't a holiday. Isn't that a state holiday now?
It's a state holiday. It's not necessarily a school holiday, but we do have a professional day on that day. So that covers, that covers our responsibility. And our schools, three of our schools are used as polling places, diversified mine, Skyline High School, and Warren County High School. So the second reading of the school calendar will be at our mid-November meeting. And then approval will be, I think it's December the second. So be happy to answer any questions or if you have any um, additional comments or whatever, be happy to, to hear those at our next school board meeting.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you.
We have a VSBA Capitol Conference, uh, January twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, course of 2021. It's going to be virtual. Anybody who wants to attend, contact Mr. Valentine. Next?
Just a reminder of all upcoming conferences.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
We're going to be having a second meeting this month, correct?
Yeah.
We've been at the conference, or you did right before?
We'll be here. How soon?
Your, your second meeting is scheduled for, I think it's the 17th, Tuesday instead of Wednesday.
Because we start the conference on the
At five o'clock, because you start the conference on Wednesday. And it'll be up at Diversified Minds. We'll send out a course of notice, but Tuesday, the 17th, at Diversified Minds.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Next item is closed meeting. Would you like to read this in, Mr. Wells?
Yes. This motion is made that this open public meeting of Warren County School Board become a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711. The school board desires to discuss the following matter in a closed meeting. Section 2.2-3711A1, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of employees of the school board, specifically the review of the superintendent's 90-day entry claim.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Valentine?
Mr. Rinaldi?
Aye.
Mrs. Bauer?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
And Dr. Pence?
Aye.
We are now in closed session.